Appeals Board meeting in the town of Raymond for today, which is Monday, October 27, 2014. The appeals board will come to order. The board does have a quorum. We need three members for a quorum, and we have four. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all of the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the chairman if you are unable to hear or see. The board works from a published agenda, and we'll be considering tonight's items in the following order. In each instance, the burden is upon the applicant to demonstrate compliance with the provisions of the applicable ordinances. After the board votes on the merits of each project application, it will prepare a written notice of decision. Because the notice of decision may substantially affect any appeal rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting with regard to a specific project not leave until the board has completed its discussion on that, the project. Generally speaking, appeals from adverse decisions must be filed with the appropriate appeals board of Superior Court, as otherwise provided by law within 30 days of this board's decision. Also, to be certain that you preserve your individual right to file any such appeal, you must be certain that this board's record evidences your appearance this evening in opposition and the basis for your opposition. All persons speaking, including representatives of the applicant and members of the public, are asked to stand, state their name, address, and affiliation with the project. You must sign the sign-in sheet if you are speaking for or against a project. All persons speaking shall address the chairman. And now we move on to the agenda for this evening. One was the call to order. Now, two is the election of a chair and vice chairman. Our former chairman, Michael Schaefer, has changed his residence and now living in Portland, Maine, so he is no longer chairman, and we need a new chairman and a vice chairman. Do I hear any nominations for a chairman?
I'll nominate you, Larry Murch, as chairman.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor? Okay, now we need a vice chairman. Do I hear a nomination for a vice chairman?
I nominate Eldon Lingdon.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
All in favor of Eldon Lingdon? Approval, okay. Now, do we have the approval of the minutes of April 28, 2014? Do I hear an approval of that nomination to approve that?
I have no changes. I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Do I hear a second?
I seconded it.
All in favor? Okay. Now, the fourth business meeting is the applications. Leo Blair, on behalf of Lapco LLC, 55 Stark Cove Road, MAP 066, Lot 066, LRR2 Zone. Reason: Applicant is requesting an administrative appeal for an alleged tree-cutting violation. Now, this is a holdover, I believe, from the last time we were here. And I will read the letters that I have here, so everybody is on an equal footing as to what has been going on. And the first one is October 17 of 2014.
Excuse me, do you want to give Mr. Blair a chance to speak first, or you want to go through the letters?
Do you think we should go through the letters first, or let him speak?
I think we should let Mr. Blair have it.
All right, then, is Leo Blair here? Will you go to the platform?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Sign in.
No, don't say that.
State your name, your address, and affiliation with the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Leo Blair. I live at 188 Prospect Hill Road in Harvard, Massachusetts, and I'm the owner of the company that owns this property. I don't see a sign-in sheet. I will make sure to sign in at the conclusion of this process. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you folks tonight. I'm here to, as you correctly identified, to appeal this notice of violation. And I believe that you've most likely been supplied with the materials that I submitted along with my application, which included a letter from me on June 12, 2014, which I addressed to Mr. Hanson, and the other supporting documents, which were the plan of the cutting plan and so on. Essentially, what transpired here is I purchased this property, and in the late fall of last year, I contracted with the Q Team to come and do tree removal. Q Team, following the correct procedure, created a plan of the property, applied for a permit to do the tree removal, and was granted that permit. I don't know if there was a site visit at that time or not, I would be speculating. And indeed, started the work, I would say probably in late November, perhaps early December, and worked on the project for a day or two, and we're about 60% complete on the cutting when the first major snowstorm of last year occurred. And the day, that was a pretty substantial snowstorm, as I recall. And a day or two after, I got a call from Adam Goslin at Q Team saying that they were kind of at a standstill because they were waiting for the snow to melt, and that they would go back and continue the work when they could get to it. The process that they had completed in the first couple of days was the removal of many of the trees, and I think cutting those trees up and hauling them away, and also the limbing up of a couple of trees that were to be removed but had not yet been removed. So they went up and they were going to climb them and then limb them, limb them and then cut them. And there was a lot of slash on the ground from that process, as you might imagine, and that was what was concealed by the snow. So, last winter being what it was, there was a protracted period of time when there was no way to get back onto the site and get to that slash. And contemporaneous with this, I had applied to the DEP for a permit by rule to remove a stone jetty that was directly in front of the property. And the plan for the removal of the stone jetty was to have a machine come in and then take the rocks that had been formed into a wall, and then to redistribute them randomly in the water, which is the preferred method by DEP. So I applied for that permit, and I did indeed receive a permit by rule. And I contracted with P&amp;K to go in and do that project. And I think they did it, my memory's a little fuzzy, but I think it was in January. And again, of course, there was snow cover at the time. To be able to do it because of where the jetty was located and because of the topographical features at the property, and I know, I think, I know that at least two of you folks have been to the property, because I was, it was kind enough to be able to meet you there. But the nature of it is, is that they had to traverse a pretty narrow area and then go in front of the cottage and down to the water. And they had to stage the machine on top of some boulders to be able to reach the rocks and distribute them. Directly pertinent to where they staged the machine are some hemlocks. And it's my belief that as part of the process, the arm of the excavator interfered with those branches, because when I came, the next time I saw the property was in April, and the branches on those hemlocks were hanging vertically, not horizontally anymore, they were vertical. The machine they used is a very large machine. It's a Komatsu 200. It, as I explained to a couple of the members at the site visit, it weighs, I think, 46,000 pounds. It has 11-foot-wide track on it. It's 35 feet tall. But it was necessary because the boulders were very large, and to be able to make that reach and distribute them back into the water, you can't work within the water, obviously. So they needed a machine of that size. As the machine traversed down that, it did indeed crush some vegetation there. And when the spring came and the snow was gone, it was clear that there was vegetation that had been crushed. And indeed, it's part of my responsibility as a property owner to replicate that, to replant that. And I've actually undertaken to do a lot of that. I just, for the first time, saw the letter from DEP. And I would take some issue with many of the things in the letter, but one of the things I will say categorically is, one of the things that I planted, and I planted 30 of them, so I remember, are Maine blueberry bushes. So I think that's about as native to Maine as you can get. But I embraced that process, and I also started to plant shrubs and trees, pear trees, arborvitae as they correctly identified, and other shrubs to augment the damage that was occasioned by the excavator traversing that area. The evidence of the excavator is very clear. You can see the scars on the rock yet to this day. So it's easy to follow the path of where it went. And so, rolling the tape forward, it's now, it's April, the snow is gone, and there's a tremendous amount of slash on the ground, and broken, some broken shrubs on the ground, and so on and so forth. And I hired a company called T&amp;W Enterprises to come in and clean up the slash. They came in, cleaned up the slash. They also did indeed limb those broken branches on the hemlocks. And subsequent to that, a neighbor was concerned, came over, made a complaint to the code enforcement officer. He naturally and correctly responded to that, and came out and inspected the site and determined in his judgment that there were violations. I subsequently met with the code enforcement officer and a representative of DEP at the site, and we talked about it. And I think it would be fair to say that the representative from DEP, because I specifically asked this question, characterized it. I said, "On a scale of 1 to 10, what kind of a violation is this?" And he said, "Maybe it's a 2." So it was seemingly not a serious violation. At that time, I was assured that I would not be cited for the violation. I was, Chris was kind enough to say that to me on three occasions that day, in the presence of Mr. Morse. They have sensed, stated that they did not say that. So there's a disagreement as to whether they made that representation or not. They would say they did not. I would assure you that they did. And the conversation was, "We're not going to cite you for this. You need to do some replanting. Here's how you ought to do the replanting. When it's done, let me know. Draw up a plan of where you're going to plant. When it's done, I'll come over and inspect it. If it's up to snuff and the plant survives, we're good." About mid-week of the following week, I was at work, and I got a call from the code enforcement officer saying, "I don't want you to get upset, but I've decided that I am going to have to cite you, and I'm going to have to fine you." And I said, "Well," I was upset. I said, "That's not what we talked about, and I'm disappointed," and so on, and tried to press him a little bit for an explanation as to why. And he was, you know, perfectly polite and said, "I've just, you know, that's the decision I've made." And that was fine. Subsequent to that, I called the town manager, and I actually had a conference call with the town manager and with the code enforcement officer. And I reiterated the conversation that I just explained to you. And the feedback I got was, "Look, it's not a lot of money. It's not a big fine. It's not a big deal. It's not a major violation. Why are you concerned about it?" And that's a good question. And then subsequently to that, we had a meeting here, up here, and I can't remember the date of that, but I want to think, say it was in the late summer, perhaps? And we had a meeting to talk about trying to settle the disagreement over the violation. And at that meeting, I indicated to the town manager and the code enforcement officer that I would be willing to pay a fine of $3,000, and I'd be willing to replicate the planting. But that, and we seemed to have an agreement. And then, at the end of the meeting, the town manager indicated to me that there would be a consent agreement. And I said, "I don't know what he means by that." And he said, "Well, it's standard in these practices," and so on and so forth. I said, "Okay." I said, "I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, but I have to see it." I received a consent decree, and it essentially says that I admitted that I willfully violated the ordinance. I did not. And it goes on to say that I would pay the town's legal fees, and it basically puts a lien on the property so that for a period of, some period of time, that the town has the right to order me to replace any trees that don't survive. And I can understand the reason for that, so I'm not terribly uncomfortable with that. It doesn't do any good to replicate plantings if they're not going to survive, so I get that. I was not, am not willing to sign a consent decree that says I willfully violated the shoreline zoning ordinance. I didn't willfully do it at all. I do believe that there was damage to some of the vegetation there, occasioned by the activity. I recognize that, and I don't dispute that. There was no plan, there was no undertaking to limb up trees. In fact, if you're going to limb up trees, those aren't the trees you'd limb up. And then, in closing, I want to say, part of the violation that appears here includes two trees, excuse me, three trees, major trees, that were on the schedule to be cut, and I've been cited for limbing up, but they actually were supposed to be removed. So they were limbed up in preparation for removal. I haven't removed them. They stay there, and they don't need to be removed. But that's kind of, I think that's beyond the bounds of what certainly, I think, would be intended here. The main problem I have is that, I was out there again today. I took my camera and took a lot of pictures, and I actually took the plan. And the trees that were removed from the property are the trees that were on the cutting plan. There are areas, too, as you face the water, so it'd be to the, that'd be to the south of the house, where I'm supposed to have removed some number of trees. There were no trees removed there. Simply none. There were none. If you've been to the site, it's remarkable that any tree can grow there, because it's almost solid rock. One other thing is, as the process has unfolded, the code enforcement officer has made the comment to me on a couple of occasions, and he's absolutely right, that I have not submitted a replanting plan to him, and that he wants me to do that, which I'm happy to do. But the problem with that site is, and I mean this sincerely, it is so bad, it is so rocky, that I'm going to have to plant and then do the plan, because I can't tell you where I can penetrate the ground to dig a hole. To do the 30 blueberry bushes took me three days. And for every hole that I actually dug, I had like five refusals. It's just solid rock. So I'm happy to come up with a plan. I'm happy to replace, put in more plants that are native, more native, I guess, than the blueberry bushes that are there. I have no problem with that. But I did not willfully violate the shoreline zoning ordinance, and I would not do that. And I cannot in good conscience agree to sign a consent decree that says I did. I get that this is expensive for the town, and that's why I would, I previously agreed, and I still agree, to pay the $3,000 fine, because I understand this costs money, all this costs money. And I also understand that you want to send a message to people to discourage this kind of thing, and I appreciate that. But this was not in any way willful, and I'm troubled by that, and I'm old-fashioned enough so that I'm willing to do what's necessary to protect my good name. So that in summary is why I'm here tonight. I will say I've appreciated dealing with the members of the town employees, both Danielle, Chris, and the little interaction I've had with the town manager, and the lot of interaction I've had over the years with all the people, the staff. They're very professional, very helpful. I know Chris has a tough job to do. I consider myself one of the good guys, and I don't like feeling like one of the bad guys. So that's why I came up here tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in support of Mr. Leo Blair? Is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to Mr. Leo Blair? Okay. I do have a letter to the Board of Appeals. I feel I should read this, so everybody knows here what was sent. And this was dated today, October 27 of 2014, to the Board of Appeals, Town of Raymond, 401 Webb's Mills Road, Raymond, Maine 04071. Regarding Leo Blair Administrative Appeal at 55 Stark Cove Road, MAP 066, Lot 006. Dear Members of the Board of Appeals, we are writing to provide written comments regarding the above-referenced appeal for the board's consideration. Mr. Blair has appealed the town's enforcement actions related to violations of the shoreline zoning provisions within the town's ordinance. At the request of Chris Hanson, CEO, I met on-site with Mr. Hanson and Mr. Blair on May 28 to evaluate the site and determine whether the tree and vegetation removal activities and the stone jetty removal project violates the town's ordinance and states shoreline zoning provisions. During our inspection, we determined that there are violations at the site. Specifically, the violations cited in the town's notice of violation of November, NOV, N-O-V, I take that means notice of violation, dated June 5, 2014, are consistent with our observations on May 28. In Mr. Blair's letter to Chris Hanson dated June 12, 2014, and included in his appeal application, he comments about the tree pruning that the department wishes to clarify for the board's benefit. Regarding the excessive pruning of tree branches as cited in the NOV, Mr. Blair suggests that three trees' branches had to be pruned after being damaged by the excavator's boom during the work conducted at the shoreline to remove a stone jetty. It is the department's recollection that the tree branches pruned in excess were not located near or at the immediate shoreline, and that there were six to eight trees pruned excessively. It is difficult for us to fathom that the equipment operating at the immediate shoreline, reaching into the water and not onto the land, could have damaged tree branches at the affected locations. I certainly would not have occurred, it certainly would not have occurred, when the excavator traversed the buffer to access the shoreline. We support the town for properly citing Mr. Blair in the NOV for pruning live tree branches above the bottom third of trees within the buffer. Otherwise, Mr. Blair does not appear to address the tree and other low-vegetation removal elsewhere on the parcel that were removed in violation of the ordinance's provisions. Having observed freshly cut stumps in areas of destroyed, removed low vegetation, and ground cover on-site, the department readily occurs with the town's NOV citing Mr. Blair for tree removal and low vegetation, ground cover removal violations. There really is no question that these violations exist, and for this alone, we strongly urge the board to deny the appeal. Finally, it does not appear to be subject to this appeal. The department feels it is important to acknowledge an additional problem at the subject parcel. As Mr. Blair describes in his appeal, the use of equipment at the shoreline did not necessitate limited damage or destruction of vegetation in a path through the buffer in order to provide equipment access to the shoreline. Our observation on May 28 confirmed that some vegetation had been damaged or destroyed within this path. However, while it is expected that limited vegetation damage will occur, such removal would be allowed in order to accomplish the project, provided that the damaged or destroyed vegetation is replaced with similar native species in a reasonable time period. In this case, replanting should have been completed during the spring growing season, since the project was completed at the end of February. During our inspection in May, Mr. Blair assured Mr. Hanson that he would replant vegetation very soon. Now that both the spring and fall growing seasons have passed, and we understand that the replanting of similar native vegetation has not occurred, yet within this affected area, the town should consider this an additional violation subject to enforcement action. Note that Mr. Blair's planting of junipers, rhododendrons, and azaleas do not comply with the requirement to replant similar native species as removed, since those plants are non-native ornamental plants. We expressly did not agree to the replanting of such species as a way to gain compliance with the ordinance, but acknowledged that he could plant such species on the property as supplemental plantings. To reiterate, this department strongly urges the board to deny the appeal. By no means does this matter approach being considered as an egregious violation, but the violations do exist and must be properly addressed. We hope that the board finds our comments to be beneficial in its review of this matter. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any additional questions or comments residing this opinion. Sincerely, Mike Morse of the Department of Environmental Protection. Does anybody on the appeals board have any questions they would like to address to Leo Blair? Or does anybody on the appeals board have any issues they would like to raise?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Blair, I'm just curious why Q Team never came back to finish the job when you had a permit with them already?
You should.
The, I spoke to Adam Goslin at Q Team, and when the snow had gone out, they were booked out pretty far. So I, and he hadn't sent me a bill for the job. So I said, "Well, why don't you send me a bill for the work you did, and let me know when you guys are going to have," I said, "band-width, some more time to do it." At the same time that that was happening, I was working with my son-in-law and his business partner on building a shed for me, rebuilding a shed over at my house at Cape Road. And his business partner mentioned that his brother was in the tree business and was looking for work. And I said, "Well, I need to have the rest of this slash all cleaned up, so if you can ask him if he wants to do it, if he wants to do it, have him come over." And so he came over a day or two later, went over and looked at it, came back, said, "Here's what I think it'll cost and what it'll take." I took him over to the site. I said, "There's the scope of the work." And so I hired him, and he did it, I think, the next day. So it was convenience.
You didn't think another permit might be necessary?
No, I don't think so, because he was, at that point, he was cleaning up slash that was on the ground. was on the ground. It was just debris.
But no limbing?
He did limb. He did limb the trees, the branches that were hanging sideways. Yes, he did do that. But what I hired him to do was to clean up the slash.
Joanna, I might make note at this point, that when I wrote Mr. Blair's notice of violation, I also wrote a notice of violation to T.W. Tree, his tree removal company, for the cutting. And after Mr. Blair and the DEP, the town manager, and myself, we had the meeting here to discuss a consent agreement, Mr. Blair said that he would be responsible-
Yes.
...for any fines or any violations on the site. So at that time, we basically dropped the notice against the tree removal company and moved forward that Mr. Blair would take full responsibility, whether it was his tree company or the excavator, whomever did the damage, Mr. Blair took full responsibility.
That's absolutely correct, and I still do. That's, Chris's statement's accurate. I'm the property owner, the buck stops with me.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other question? I would like to ask Mr. Blair, what made you select junipers, rhododendrons, and azaleas? Why didn't you plant something like small white pine trees, or cover the ground over with winter rye, which is used as a cover crop to grow up and hold sod in place?
Yeah, that's a good question. I planted thirty lowbush blueberry plants, which were native species, and in addition to that, I also wanted to get it to look pretty, so I put some plants that would give a color, which is the rhododendrons and the azalea. But I put in thirty blueberry bushes.
Okay, did you plant any white pine?
I didn't. There wasn't, Mr. Chairman, there wasn't, that I recall, I don't think there was any white pine on that property. There's hemlock, but I don't think, unusually for Maine, I don't think there is any white pine on that property.
I think there is one pine, I think it's a red pine, but there is pine. And I would agree that most of the vegetation that was disturbed from pictures that I have of the site before the cutting was done were hemlock. It might be a good time for me to go through a couple of pictures so you can see, those of you that, Larry, you never went on the site walk, so it may be helpful to see some pictures to see what the violations are.
Hemlock usually denotes that it's kind of wet soil. Are you there, where you are, is it kind of wet, boggy?
I, shall I answer that, Mr. Chairman? I think that the hemlocks did well, because the property actually hasn't been used for a long time. The property had kind of fallen by the wayside. So I think they sort of tend to promote each other, right? They trap moisture and so on. The site itself is sloping to the water and very, very rocky, so I don't, I would not characterize the soils there as wet. In fact, it's pretty hard to dig anything in there. It's pretty rocky soil, to say the least.
Would you like me to go through some of the slides?
Yes, I would, yes.
Do you want me to dim the lights?
That'd be great. This picture was taken in August of 2011 by the Portland Water District. This would be Mr. Blair's property. This would be, Leo, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe in your property line, be right about in here?
Yeah, I'm going to go up there, Chris?
Yeah.
I think, I'm thinking it's here.
Okay.
But you could be right, but I think it's just on the side of this rock.
This is another picture, looking at the property from, more from the front. His other property line would be somewhere over in here, Leo?
That's correct.
So you can see, this is probably some deciduous trees in here. If you look really close in here, there was quite a bit of hemlock. This is the pine that I was referring to, right by my living room.
That's still there, yeah.
And this is the ground cover, this type of stuff that is absolutely nonexistent at this point. Move forward a little bit. This picture would be the same side on the right, his property line being over in here. These are some of the trees in this area that were pruned above the one-third. I have another picture that'll show you more on the height. These are the arborvitae's that Mr. Blair planted, that may be a blueberry, can't tell, maybe we can zoom in. Yeah, it looks like a blueberry. But you can see there's an awful lot of bare ground, even with the plantings that he's planted. Go ahead.
Can I just ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if that's on, I guess it's probably going through the system. What time of year was this taken, Chris, do you know? Is that snow?
That was snow. No, that's not snow, that's the-
That's the, that's the rock.
That's the rock.
That's, so the white up there is the rock?
Yeah. I can get the exact date if we need it.
Okay, no, it's just-
I was just curious, because it doesn't-
And it just came out in that picture, kind of strange.
Yeah, it does.
Same day this picture was taken, and there's no snow.
Right.
But here's a couple more of the arborvitae's, and I think that back in there is the pear tree you were referring to.
Yeah, there's another one.
Now, looking at this picture, these trees in the middle, these were pretty well pruned up, pretty hard before he brought his piece of equipment down through here. The other trees I were noting, above the third, were in this area here. This is again looking down at that side, where it looks white, where it's just rock. It's not snow. This is his winding path to the lake. This is, go ahead.
Can you go back just on that one? I'm sorry, I've got to get used to this, I'm usually.
If you zoom in a little, you'll start to see, there's a lot of blueberries. So that's a blueberry, that's a blueberry, that, to the left of that is a blueberry. That, that in the foreground there is a blueberry and so on. So there's, it's hard to see in this picture. There's thirty of them.
I'm not disputing at all that there's thirty blueberry bushes there. The opposition I have that those would be supplemental to plantings to replace the native vegetation, as stated in the DEP's letter. That's what we discussed on-site, and that's what we were expecting to see on replanting or revegetation plan. This is the view from the, under the deck. As you can see, this, over here, when we first looked at the picture in the beginning, this was all vegetated over here, and a lot of this over here. I have some pictures on this side of stumps along that rock that were taken, and I believe the jetty work was all done out in here. I don't believe the equipment had to sit over here, did it, Leo?
Is that actually right where the arrow?
Right here.
Sorry. No, it's that, right, if I may? Oh, let me get, use a laser pointer, if I can figure out how to do this. I don't think I know how to do that. But if you look at the stern of that boat-
That?
Yeah, the piece of equipment sat there, because what they did is they grabbed the rocks that were about where that dock is now, is where the jetty was, and then we distributed them all to the right.
So that probably would explain why there's no vegetation there. This is, these are the trees that were pruned up excessively on that side towards the porch. Piece of equipment, he took this porch down, now landing, that piece of equipment came in here, and then down through here. I think we're just getting repetitive now. I'm going to go back to, look at this picture, this vegetation over here, what's over here, judging by these three trees. This is that area on the left, on the right, excuse me. And this is the area that he's talking about where that piece of equipment's at.
Can you go back one slide? Okay. And one more, if you don't mind. Okay. There was one, where you said, were you suggesting that those three trees are the same three trees that were over there?
No, it was the other slide.
Okay.
But I think, I think it's pretty, it's pretty clear that there's not much vegetation on the site. What the state, DEP, and myself felt was needed is a reforestation plan with native species and fines to address the pruning that you can't mitigate. And just to be clear, I want to, the notice of violations were for more than one-third, tree height, limb approximately fifty to seventy-five percent. It's a violation of Section 15Q, the Raymond Shore and Zoning Ordinance says, clearing of vegetation under three feet and other ground cover and exceeding permitted tree removal.
Should we off-set the lights?
Yeah.
Do I hear motion from any member of the Board?
I have another question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, go right here.
Mr. Blair, I'm a little confused on one thing. Do you agree that a violation occurred?
I agree that the, the activity that resulted in the damage to the trees, that is the DEP-type activity, caused damage to the property. So there's no question about that, in my mind. The, I do not believe that there was a violation of the shore, your shoreline zoning ordinance.
Do I have any more? Do you have any more questions, anybody?
Larry, I have a, I have a comment. I'm less interested in who said what to who and when, as I am to the points, the three points that Mr. Hansen listed in the notice of violation, and what the facts are. And I understand that there was, there was limbing done to the trees, but if we look at the, if we look at what our ordinance says, and I believe this is in shoreline zoning, it's a very simple statement, it says pruning of tree branches on the bottom one-third of trees is allowed. We may have two different sets of circumstances here of why trees were cut up more than fifty percent. But during the site walk, what I noticed is we walked down past the, I'll call it the left side of the property, as we're moving from the road where we parked down to the dock, we kind of followed the path that the machine took, which is diagonal and downslope from the property to the lower right-hand corner, and when I walked out on the dock, I could see trees that were significantly off of that path, that had been limbed up some distance, certainly more than a third, I would guess, maybe fifty percent or even higher. And one of the questions I asked myself is, how is this big machine going to get to these trees? So, you know, I wasn't there, I don't understand what was going on. I know the thing is, a big machine, it's got a big boom, and if he was spinning that turret, or whatever it is, as he was going down the slope, something like that could happen, but if he was on a straight path, I don't, I don't, I really don't, don't see how that happened. But when I, when I look at this, and I see what our ordinance says, about one-third, I see a violation. Maybe it was an unknowing violation, but I see, I see a violation. And I think the, the letter dated today from the gentleman at DEP supports the same conclusion. And I personally feel the same way about the second thing that was cited in the citation, clearing of vegetation under three feet and other ground cover. It seemed to me that almost all of the property between the building itself and the shoreline has had some activity.
What bothers me is, is that you're trying to replant these with juniper, rhododendrons, and azaleas, bushes that don't grow very high to preserve your view maybe, but to me, it would be better if you planted native species like white pine. Get some white pine in there, they would grow, and they will grow about that much per year. And this is the pine tree state, and that's what we like to see on Raymond Cape and around town is, is white pine instead of juniper bushes, which we call ground hemlock, and we're not very good. Rhododendrons, azaleas, they're not native around here, in my mind.
In the past, Larry, the DEP and Portland Water District, because they govern this water body as well, have always been very willing to assist with property owners in coming up with a restoration plan.
Mm-hmm.
Either one or both, we've worked closely with on other projects-
Mm-hmm.
-to come up with the white pines, the hemlocks that would be appropriate to revegetate a site.
My question, I want to get straight in my mind with you, is are you satisfied with his revegetation program?
No.
All right.
Mr. Blair, I think I heard a comment from you that you would be willing to talk to Chris and discuss an appropriate vegetation program.
Absolutely. The, the, I wasn't suggesting that the arborvitae's and the azaleas and the rhododendrons were addressing the vegetation restoration plan. I believe the blueberry bushes were, were specifically put in there to start to address that issue. It, it, I'm happy to put in hemlocks or white pines. The other thing that was talked about is some deciduous trees, so I put in two pear trees. The, and I'm actually kind of indifferent about that view issue, Mr. Chairman, I get, you know, that's absolutely a very good observation on your part, but that's not really the driver. The driver is, is that it's going to be hard to find a way to put holes in the ground there. I mean, literally, I'm not exaggerating. It is rock, solid rock, and so anything that has a big root ball, I just don't know how you would plant it. I'm willing to try, certainly. The, I think the Portland, I think the last time I spoke to Chris about this, or I heard, no, it was during our site walk, somebody said something about putting fifteen trees on, if you're looking at this slide, to the left of where we're looking. That would be fifteen trees in an area about half the size of this room. There's just no conceivable way you could put them in there and have them grow. It's just not possible. So I'm happy to cooperate on a replanting plan, absolutely, and I'll plant the species that you and your wisdom, or Chris, or DEP suggest are the best species. I mean, it's, that's immaterial to me. I, what I'm trying to do is plant things that'll, I can get in the ground and that would stabilize the situation. So there's forty-odd new plants in that place. Because that doesn't look like much to you, but it was a lot of work.
I, I do see pine trees in the ground, so pine trees will grow there, yeah.
There's one, you know, I guess it's a red pine, there's one pine grown there. There's, you know, hemlocks might grow, and indeed, white pines might grow. I think the only way to do it would be to bring in soil and mound up.
And that's what we have done on other sites.
I may have to do it here.
Mr. Blair, did you ask, you said you had Kennedy Landscaping out there?
I did.
Did he have any suggestions that would-
He suggested, and he planted the first, he planted junipers up here, because there were junipers that got trampled up by the, that sliding door on the hill. It's hard to see, but there was a hillside there, and the junipers got crushed. So we replant, he replanted those, and he replanted the first round of blueberry bushes, and then I put in another. So I think he put in fifteen, and then I put in another fifteen or twenty.
Did you ask him while he was there to help you come up with a planting, a plan? Did you ask him while he was there to help you come up with a planting, a plan that you were gonna bring back to Chris?
I, I did, and he, he was kind of overwhelmed by the soil conditions. He said, I, short of literally filling in the areas between rocks and then sticking a tree in it, that it would be pretty difficult. I, I will submit to you, I could strongly disagree that, on looking again at the house from the water on the left, there was no, nothing like fifteen trees there. Nothing like it, not even close. And I was out there today. I looked very carefully. So, you know, there's simply not enough physical space for anything like that. But I'm sure that Chris could guide me on that, and I'm sure that we could figure out a way to get it done.
Is there anybody else? Have any comments?
I have a, I have a question for, question for Chris. I think we heard Mr. Blair say he would be willing to pay the fine. Is there any way, without us making a decision, for you guys to get back to the conference room and get this thing resolved?
I think, I think-
Or is the-
I think I'll let Mary interject here. I think your charge tonight is to address the appeal, not how we resolve the violations. I've been very willing to work with Leo, but tonight we're here looking at his appeal and whether it has merit and how the board feels about that. Am I right, Mary?
That's correct. So, Mary Costigan, I'm the town attorney. The, he has appealed the notice of violation. So your job tonight is to determine whether that decision by Chris to issue that notice of violation should be overturned or should be upheld. If you uphold that decision, that means the NOV stands, and Chris and Mr. Blair, if he is willing, can go and begin negotiating again. What happens in a notice of violation situation is if the landowner does not cooperate and there's no resolution of the violation, it will then be referred to the Board of Selectmen, and they will determine whether they want to take further action. But tonight is just whether or not you believe that Chris's notice of violation was issued properly. To give you the exact standard, you can reverse his decision only upon a finding that the decision was clearly contrary to specific provisions of these ordinance provisions.
So, so we're, we're determining one thing?
You're just determining that one thing, and you'll only reverse him if it was clearly contrary to the ordinance.
If that's the one thing we're determining, I'm going to make a motion that we uphold the decision of Chris, our code enforcement officer. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? Was it?
Mary, how did you?
I, I voted-
Okay, then there was four, four to uphold Chris, the code enforcement officer. And that's what, that's what we're voting on, so we voted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And that means you've got to work with Chris and satisfy him.
Yes. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That is the application of the evening. Number five is, do we have any board communications? If there are none, do we have any code enforcement officer comments?
I'd like to welcome our new chairman.
I've been here since nineteen eighty, I think it was eighty-four. When we started it, we had Rudy Greep and the guy that has the plants up there, oh, Merly. We were the three that started. I got a call from Carlton Edwards.
When Carlton called, you came running.
Yeah, he ran this town with an iron fist, I want to tell you.
Well, I don't have anything, really. I think code enforcement has been going pretty well. We've seen a decline in this type of activity since we've had some pretty high-profile cases. I do appreciate your support, as always. We are seeing uptick in building again. We're seeing more big homes on the lakes, more single families. We're up quite a bit over last year right now. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but that's where we are.
Is, is the building more from, well, Route eighty-five that way towards the lakes, or is it on Raymond Hill and North Raymond type?
Actually, it's pretty, it's all over. It's really no, the only place I can say it's concentrated would be on the Cape itself. There's some tear downs, rebuilds on the Cape. But other than that, they're pretty much just dotted all over Raymond. We've got one subdivision off from Rosewood that's, Abbey Lane is being developed now, that's been dormant for, since two thousand four or five.
Is that the Hancock?
Yeah.
Project?
Yeah. We've got a developer building that out, and we got one house already started in there. And other developments that were pre-approved, were approved way back in the early two thousands are just starting to have homes built on them, so.
Are these year-round, the majority residences, or just a mixture?
Well, the ones on the lake, no, but the single-family homes, yes.
How many units have been approved? Was it twenty-one on that Hancock property?
No. At Abbey Lane, it was originally eleven. I think this is like eight left. So it's not a huge subdivision. But we're moving in the right direction.
I have a question for you, if I may.
Sure.
We had, we had an instance, a couple meetings ago, where after discussion, the people who submitted the appeal withdrew the appeal.
Okay.
In this case, could that have been done?
Yeah.
Kind of where I was headed. I was hoping that we might find some way that everyone would save face on this thing and get back to the discussion stage.
With a notice of violation, it's a little different, because really, a notice of violation just puts somebody on warning that there may be some action, and before there's some action taken, you might want to work it out a little bit. So really, I mean, what your decision does is back up Chris. So in going into negotiations and referring this possibly to the select board if they can't negotiate, that's, it's helpful, but it really doesn't, it's not like you're giving a permit or taking one away, or, you know, it's a little different, in terms of the impact of your decision.
Okay, thank you.
Have you guys had a training in a while? I know there's been some new members, and Larry, you've been around forever, but as the new board, anything you can use a training?
The last training I was, the town loaded us into vans and took us down and bought us a meal at the Yonkers, the one down, the muddy rudder, and we went up to Freeport High School, and we sat there for several hours while people from the state talked about that.
Well, we can come to you, we'll bring you food, but we can come to you, and you don't have to go to Freeport.
I think that would be great.
You think it'll be helpful?
Very much so.
Okay, but, yeah, Shawna or I can come and do the training.
That was the only, that was the only time we have had any training, outside of that.
I mean, I took notes, for example, your interim talks about thirty days to appeal. It's actually forty-five. So that was probably written before you started, and since then the statutes have changed. So little things like that, we can look at your statement and change it and just make sure that you're all on the same page.
That would, that would be helpful.
And it helps, too, to go, because there are different standards of review for different towns, specifically, like that standard for shoreline zoning is different than your variant standard or other standards, so keep those. And those are things that if somebody, if he was to appeal tonight, so many of the appeals that I see get sent back because either the wrong standard of review was applied, or the, the findings weren't written properly, or not enough was in the record. And I don't, you may have noticed I passed Chris a note to make sure that he actually put his NOV into the record, because that wasn't even discussed. Just those little things like that to keep in mind when you have these hearings.
One, 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 excuse me.
If you can find someone to approve the budget for your time, I'd love to have a fancy reflection.
Well, no, we do it for free.
You're gonna do it for free?
Yeah, we do trains for free.
That's good.
And Danielle, would you put out the notice and let us know?
For the trainings, yeah.
Do you guys want that, like, November, December, going into the holiday season, or would you wait until the spring?
After.
How about your December meeting? Would that work for you?
Right, but I'm away the first part of January, and I'd really like to go, so the end of January.
Anyway, get here, we have no more schedule in January. Can you coordinate with Mary and get that taken care of wherever you're at?
That would be great.
I have a monkey wrench.
Do we have any, anything on the agenda for next month, so?
Not, not this time.
That would be November, and nothing for, you know, what you would, wouldn't know until we got to December, so.
Right.
Things pretty slow down.
Yep.
Okay.
Who do I notify that I will be absent January, or December through April?
That'd be me.
Send you an email?
Yep. Okay.
And we're still looking for an alternate.
And a new member.
And a new member. We need another member and an alternate.
One or two.
We need two.
One member and one alternate.
Shake the bushes.
Okay.
I tried to recruit on the golf course this afternoon, after the guy, after the guy won some of my money and he turned me down.
Do I hear any, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.